We are going to call to order the Amington Township Board of Commissioners Working Session for May 12, 2022. Our first item of the business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of April 14, 2022. I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions about the minutes from the April 14 meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We will now open it up for public comment on the two agenda items that we have this evening. I see there is one hand raised on Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
So, the first thing I'd like to say is I would like you, you just addressed the minutes to the meeting and that's on the agenda tonight. And I would like to see that residents are allowed to make corrections to the agenda, where their comments are often not reflective of what they actually said, or other issues that they may have. So, I would like to see that fixed and that residents are respected in that manner. And secondly, with residents respected, also on the agenda is public comment. And the public comment for this meeting is absolutely not in the interest of the resident. There is no way that we can cogently comment until we hear the item presented, we hear what changes may be made, we hear what the commissioners plan to do, and then we actually, in an informed manner, we comment on the matter. And to give us five minutes, which by the way, you called expanded speaking rights while you removed all of our informed speaking rights. So, to call that expanded speaking rights was an absolute deception and should not be allowed. We need to have informed speaking rights. So, I would ask you please to present the item and then allow us, it can be just three minutes, to speak on the item that's been presented. And every meeting should have open comments at the end, where we can tell you what we think about what transpired, or add other important things. So, we would like to have that respect. In regards to the CBDG plan, we literally have spent years doing pavings and sidewalks and things like that. And what that does is that paving the streets in this township and taking care of the curbs and sidewalks and things is the responsibility either of an individual or of the township, and largely of the township these projects have been. But often, these projects have built sidewalks, for instance, for developers or people that should have put a sidewalk in or should be directed to put a sidewalk in. The very first paving project that I actually dove into when I was trying to find out what was going on with the community development program was literally paving properties, a street where properties with half a million dollar homes were. And that was years ago. So, we're talking maybe six, $700,000 homes now. And that's not how HUD money is supposed to be used. Housing and urban development is a crucial crisis issue right now for many people, including people in our township. And it's really important that you take these funds that come in to help people and you direct them in a way that actually helps them. And there needs to be another set of parameters for doing this. And in addition, our community development department seems to have been merged with the zoning and code enforcement department. They are two separate items completely. And obviously, just doing the community development is a pretty voluminous job, which might explain, I'm sorry that Mr. Manfredi did not address the lapses that I brought up both in email to him and brought up at the meeting. And if he is going to appoint a director and stand behind that director, he needs that director to be able to stand behind her work. And it is the work that I was addressing, and the fact that we cannot have people with less experience than they need to handle our most important jobs. These jobs, the zoning and development, affect the health, safety, and welfare, literally life and death issues in this township. And they can't be handled in the manner that they're being handled. So, please don't appoint any directors that don't stand up for their own work. And explain to the public, please, why the work came out like it was, why you yet again have somebody that for years has had to deal with an abandoned and derelict property. That's what we need you to do, Mr. Manfredi, not to, you have appointed, and again, you didn't appoint, you hired, okay?
Ms. Lehman, please wrap up your comments.
Yeah, okay. So, what we need in the community development funds is to have a sensitivity for the people in this township that are in need, absolute need, and to take care of them and not to say, "We don't have enough money for them because we're doing things that the township should be doing with the $18 million they got."
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the first item of new business, and this is for us to consider the amendments to the CDBG Annual Action Plan, currently in public comment period. And Manager Manfredi, I'll turn to you. You can turn to Ms. Hamm. Okay. So, we will introduce Ms. Hamm and have her lead us through this.
Thank you, President Hecker. Just give me one minute while I get my screen shared for everyone to see. All right. You guys can see that, okay?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Now, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all for taking the time to hear about some substantial amendments that are being proposed for some previous annual action plan years. This, just as a reminder, is separate from the upcoming 2022 Annual Action Plan. So, this is a quick overview of the schedule that we're following for this. We are currently in a display period for these substantial amendments that have been proposed. Yesterday, we held a public hearing. There was one attendee and no comments yet have been received. In June, we will be asking you to consider approval of the amendments, and we hope to submit them to HUD by June 17. So, for the Annual Action Plan year 2018, we are asking that we reduce a current project, the 2,700 block of Old Welsh Road sidewalk project, by $140,000. The remainder that remains in this budget item will be addressed in item B, Agenda Item B later on. And with the $140,000, we are asking that you help us to create a budget line of $140,000 for a project to support signal and pedestrian improvements at Susquehanna and Edgehill For the Annual Action Plan year 2019, we are asking that you support the change in location for a storm water mitigation project. Currently, this project has been approved at Rubicam Avenue and Old York Road. We're asking to change the location to Crestmont Park. Additionally, we're asking to cancel a small business loan assistance program valued at $23,000, excuse me, in order to increase funding to complete the Ardsley Community Center Accessibility Improvements Project. Finally, in 2019, we're asking that you approve the reduction of the project for Crestmont Blacktop improvements, and this is at the park, from $20, excuse me, from $60,000 to And create with those savings a new project to endeavor to complete similar improvements at the Rubicam Ave Park for $10,830. For the Annual Action Plan year 2021, we're asking to cancel a public facilities improvement project that was approved at Albert Thorpe Park for ADA improvements. That project is currently valued at $100,000 in order to create a new project for general improvements at Roslyn Park, also valued at $100,000. Again, this is just a review of the schedule for the substantial amendments. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Are there any comments or questions from commissioners here in the room? Vice President Vahi?
Director Hamm, can you go back to the first year worth of proposed revisions, please?
For 2018?
Yes. Boy, the Old Welsh Road sidewalks.
Yes.
So, why, why is it only costing us $140,000 now?
Well, so, we'll see that in the second, the second part of the presentation for Agenda Item B with the 2022 Annual Action Plan. But we will be creating, will be completely, the balance of $140,000 will be asking for an additional amendment to completely cancel this project, this ineligible project, to create a new project to further support improvements at the Roslyn Park.
Okay. So, you're going to discuss the changes in Welsh Road in the next agenda item?
I will.
Okay. Are you, I'm going to have, I'm asking, I'm going to ask questions on most of this. Should I just wait until the next agenda item?
Um.
I don't know what you're covering next, so I don't want to, like, pepper questions if you're going to address the substance of the projects in your next agenda item.
Sure. As long as it follows the rules of order, I'm happy to address comments in whatever order you'd like.
So, can you explain what the improvements will be to Susquehanna and Edgehill?
Sure. And I may ask Director Jones to further support any questions that might come on this. But this is a project to support a grant from 2017 through the Arlie Program that will create some signal and pedestrian improvements at this intersection. It's my understanding that when this project was put out to bid recently because of the immense escalation in construction costs, that the project came in way over budget from the original Arlie grant. So, this funding of $140,000 endeavors to bridge that gap and serve as additional funding for the completion of these improvements.
Okay. I do plan to go slide by slide. I don't know if others have questions on 2018.
We could do it that way. Any other questions about 2018? All right. Let's move forward to 2019.
Vice President Vahi? Why are we canceling the Small Business Loan Assistance Program?
We had one application from a business that was located in Rockledge. So, we have not been able to approve any applications that have come in. The few application inquiries that we have gotten have not resulted in actual applications.
Okay. For Crestmont, are we able to finish the Blacktop improvements for $49,000?
Yes.
Okay.
They've actually been completed.
Okay.
So, this was a savings that we are requesting to reinvest in another eligible park in the township.
And for Rubicam, is that for courts or parking?
Yeah. So, it says, it says Blacktop, but they are actually tennis, at Crestmont, it's tennis and basketball courts. At Rubicam, it's a basketball court resurfacing project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on 2019? We will, Commissioner Schreiber?
I'm going to go back to the Small Business Loan. I have a question on that.
Yes, please.
So, was it that people didn't apply, like, we didn't get the word out, or they weren't eligible, or both?
So, my understanding is that the constraints that come through HUD for these types of programs are a bit onerous on many business owners. We did quite a bit of outreach and advertisement on this program, including outreach to local chambers of commerce. We had a pretty comprehensive social media campaign. There's, there's videos of me on the website, as well as Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram, et cetera, that we put out.
So, it's more about the criteria?
I believe it's more of a criteria issue, yes.
Thank you.
There's also a bit of a documentation burden that I think many business owners didn't see the value in following through on.
Any further comments on 2019? Fast forward to 2020?
2021?
2021. We skipped a year. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay.
Great. Shall I move on to item B?
Hey, guys, I'm having some tech issues over here. It's Drew Rothman. I did have a question.
Feel free to jump in, Commissioner Rothman.
Well, I did feel free, but I just couldn't do it.
I'm just legitimizing that.
Uh, thank you. Sure. Sorry about that. My question is, what was going to be done at Albert Thorpe that isn't going to be done? And as I understand it, and part of my question is more so that the public can follow, but I believe that we're not actually taking away anything that was going to be done. It's just the money's going to come from a different pot. Is that correct?
So, I don't want to necessarily speak for Director Lukin's plans because I am not, you know, intimately familiar with them. But as far as CBDG funding goes, the improvements, when the plans came through, were not going to meet the threshold for CBDG funding at Albert Thorpe. As I'm sure you know, Albert Thorpe Park is not located in a low and moderate income neighborhood. So, therefore, we could not use that criteria for it to qualify. Typically, for ADA improvements, the threshold for HUD is to remove an architectural barrier. And this project wouldn't be removing an architectural barrier. The improvement would be to establish a retaining wall to increase access, which does not, again, meet the CBDG threshold, unfortunately. Because of other needs in the township, particularly many needs at Roslyn Park, it was decided that a better use of these funds would be to reinvest them in Roslyn so that other funds could be used at Albert Thorpe.
I mean, the board has heard me and my spiel's about Albert Thorpe enough times to know that I'm not really ever in favor of taking a single dollar away from that park. I think we need even much more money there than we have allocated, even though we're doing a good job at trying to do things there. But I'd ask that the township staff and my colleagues be committed to trying to find ways for more money to come back to Albert Thorpe. I mean, it is a gem in the township, and yet it's got an absurd amount of flaws that we, as a township, can do better at fixing. And I will be working with our new parks director on that stuff. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, and that's consistent with my understanding. But colleagues, just be ready for me to keep trying to push more money to that park. Thank you for the answer.
Commissioner, let me, if I may, expand on that. If you look at it from this perspective, if you recall last year in the budget process, then director Angelo Pontalandolfo, Ms. Platt, who was managing administrative services for, for the park system with Angelo, we committed a lot of dollars from ARPA to many parks projects, a lot of projects that Mr. Lukins will have to implement what was already appropriated to move forward. This particular project, because it was ADA improvements, the hope was that on top of all of the other work that was already scheduled to be done from ARPA money and capital money, that this might be something we would try to get qualified. But as Ms. Hamm pointed out, it simply will not qualify, and these improvements were more ADA-driven. Because of our construction services team, we feel very confident that we'll be able to find a way to fund the necessary improvements at reduced costs because we'll do most of the work ourselves into the future.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi.
Yeah, thank you, as always. And President Hecker, I'll slowly remove myself from speaking.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman.
If you approve.
Indeed, I do, sir. Are there any further comments or questions from members of the board about this presentation? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hamm. I think we can move on to item B.
Great. So, this part of the presentation is in regards to our regular annual allocation from HUD in regards to CBDG. Before we get started, I do want to make it very clear that because of delays in the approval of the congressional budgets, entitlement communities have not yet received their notifications of their annual allocation amounts. So, while there was a lot of thought that was put into this plan, the actual amounts may change slightly depending on when the actual allocation amounts are received from HUD. Oops. There we go. So, again, a review of the schedule for the 2022 Annual Action Plan. We did hold a needs hearing on March 22, 2022. We had a few attendees that joined us, and the main concerns were around creating opportunities for more repairs around the township, as well as environmental concerns to be addressed through the projects that we would be endeavoring to complete. Tonight is a review of this draft plan. We will be, with your consent this evening, going into a draft display and public comment period in June for the entire month. During that period, we will have a public hearing on the 15th that will be held via Zoom. We've had waivers come through from HUD to allow for that versus in-person public hearings. We will be asking for your final consideration on July 14th, and any changes will hopefully reflect the allocation letter that we hope to soon receive from HUD, as well as the incorporation of any comments that we receive in the month of June. And we do need to submit it before our annual action plan, before August 15th. And the plan year starts October 1st, which is at the point at which we'll be able to use the funding and begin these projects. Excuse me. So, this is the summary of how we're endeavoring to use the funds, based on the different professional organizations that we monitor. We are expecting the allocation to come in around $750,000. It's roughly a 6% decrease over the current year's allocation amount. And that was, you know, based on the intelligence we had with the number, how we decided to use that number as our bookmark for that. We do endeavor to use our full 20% cap for administration costs, including a fair housing stipend to train and advertise and educate in fair housing policies. The big project that we endeavor to complete in this program year is an infrastructure improvement, mostly centering around pedestrian improvements, sidewalks, crosswalks, stop signs, different kinds of signage along the length of Rubicam Avenue from Easton Road to Old York Road. The Crestmont Septa Station is almost dead center in the middle of this as well. We will not be performing improvements to the Septa Station itself, merely providing pedestrian, safe pedestrian connections between the train station and two major bus lines through the township. We also are endeavoring to establish an emergency repairs program. This will be to complement our current owner-occupied rehabilitation program so that folks who are not interested or able to complete a home, a full home rehabilitation, to bring their homes up to code compliance, are able to have help completing essential repairs to their home to keep it safe. Typical repairs that we expect to see include heating repairs and roofing repairs, based on some of the requests that we've been getting in the last year and a half. Additionally, we are creating a line item for spotlight demolition around residential accessory structures. Since COVID, there has been quite an uptick of concerns and an inability to remedy residential accessory structures that have fallen into disrepair in the township. And so, this will allow us to assist income qualifying residents in the demolishment of unsafe structures on their properties. And again, this total $750,000, which is, you know, our estimate for this year's allocation from HUD. There will be a substantial amendment that we will be submitting with the 2022 Action Plan, and this does speak to Commissioner Vahi, your question about the, how we're going to be using that extra $140,000 from the Old Welsh Road sidewalk project, 2,700 block. In that balance of $140,000, we would like to create a new activity in that year to further support improvements at Roslyn Park. Just another quick reminder of the schedule that we'll be following, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Are there comments or questions from members here? Commissioner Bowman?
Rubicam Avenue, you say, I'm not familiar with the stretch of it from Old York Road to the Crestmont Train Station. And then you're saying that, and then that's in the middle, and then it continues on to Easton Road?
Yes.
So, that's the entire stretch of Rubicam?
I'm not confident it's the entire stretch, but it's certainly a great deal of the road. I believe there's three blocks from the Bonnet Lane Diner, which goes into Crestmont Park, or, excuse me, the Crestmont Train Station. And then on the other side is the Rubicam Avenue Park, moving west to Easton Road. And I think that is five blocks, if I remember correctly. I believe that Rubicam also extends on the other ends of this, this project as well. But my understanding is that on the other side of Easton Road, there are more plentiful sidewalks.
And is that a, I know you mentioned two bus routes. I assume one's on 611 and one's on Easton Road.
Yes, sir.
Is Rubicam Avenue a thoroughfare of some sort for pedestrian activity?
They are the most direct connections from the bus routes to the train station. So, from a commuter perspective, yes. And certainly, the west side of this project, from the train station to Easton Road, also includes the Rubicam Avenue Park, which is a large draw for pedestrian activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner Weinberg?
Thank you. I have a question about the Emergency Repairs Program.
Sure.
I've been a proponent of helping individuals in need with, with the CDBG funds. So, can you tell me a little more about the Emergency Repairs Program and how many people you think you can help with that $75,000, and for what?
Sure. So, this, this amount was established with the thought that we will be able to help between three and five people in this first year. Certainly, you know, with the escalating costs of construction and home improvement materials, we might not be able to get to the full five. The nice part about this program is that it creates an opportunity for folks who have singular needs in that, you know, their heater blew and it's January, or their roof has sprung a leak and they're not able to work with their insurance company to cover the full cost of replacement. to cover the full cost of replacement, if any cost of replacement. So that's from the project perspective. We do, like I said, three to five individuals with this amount of funding. We will be able to, if we see, you know, that there is a large amount of participation in this program, we do have the ability certainly to replicate this program in future annual action plans in order to continue it. In terms of the threshold for participation for residents for the Emergency Repairs Program, the paperwork burden in order to establish eligibility is much lower than it is for the owner-occupied program. Typically, for the owner-occupied rehabilitation program, the documentation in order to establish income for HUD, per its guidelines, is pretty onerous, unfortunately. And with this program, it's not as onerous. Instead of, you know, stacks of tax returns and all of that other fun stuff that comes around with that, we would be doing what we do for our housing assistance programs that we establish through the CARES Act, which is just, you know, really looking at someone's projected income. So it's a slightly different threshold because the amount of funding is so much less. We've also seen, and actually just last month, with the owner-occupied program, that folks just aren't interested necessarily in endeavoring in a full house rehabilitation for code compliance. They're really just looking for the help on one item. And this will also allow us to serve our most needy residents in a much more timely fashion because of that much lower threshold for eligibility.
I mean, do you believe that there's a greater need than three to five people per year? And I understand that this is a very labor-intensive type project for each of them. I mean, is the hope that you're going to find that it's not so labor-intensive, and maybe we can help more people in the future?
So we don't know exactly, you know, how many, what the true taste for this kind of program is going to be. In the almost year and a half that I've been with the township, I have had numerous inquiries from folks who either don't qualify under the CDBG guidelines for the full program, that certainly need the help. And we've also had some folks who just have told us that they didn't want to go through with the program, even after qualifying through all of the financials, because they didn't want to go through a whole house renovation or didn't want to go through the many repairs that are required in order to participate in the larger program. We will see, like I said, with the fluctuating and increasing costs of home repair and construction, we don't know exactly how many people we'll be able to help, but we do believe that it will be between three and five. We are working with a rehabilitation consultant on the owner-occupied program. And they have additionally, they will be additionally supporting the township in these emergency repair program projects as well. So from an administrative standpoint, as well as a project management standpoint, I believe we certainly have the capacity to help folks. And if we find, you know, that we have a lot of takers in the beginning when our 2023 allocations come around, I would be more than happy to include, you know, a similar, if not increased, amount in order to meet the needs of our residents.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Any further questions from commissioners here in the boardroom? Any commissioners on Zoom? I can't see. Okay. Hearing none, we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you.